Say no.
Yeah, it's okay. You just come up here.
Just up the mic.
Okay.
Okay, anytime you're ready.
Okay. Good morning, all. Welcome to Iron County Commission Meeting Monday, the twenty-eighth day of November twenty twenty-two. And we will get started with a prayer from Curtis and then I'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our dear Heavenly Father, we are so grateful to Thee for the blessings that Thou has given to us. We're thankful to be able to live in this free country, pray that we may honor it and be able to do our best as citizens and leaders of the county and the government, pray that Thou would bless all those who strive to serve the people, that they may do so in a pleasing manner before Thee and that would be correct for the, make the correct decisions for the county and other areas of this country. We're thankful for all that we have and pray that Thou would bless these proceedings and meetings, that they will go according to Thy mind and will. And we say these things in the name of Thy said, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Please follow me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we will go ahead and I'd call for a motion to approve the minutes for eleven-one twenty twenty-two.
I'll make that motion to approve the minutes of eleven-one two thousand twenty-two.
Second?
What's that? Fourteenth?
It's the first.
It's the first.
It was this. It was the first. It was the special meeting, yes. Moved in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And could I have a motion on the claims?
I'll move to approve claims from November fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two to November twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-two.
Second, moved in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
We need to excuse Mike Blake. He is out of town. Thought I'd go ahead and say that. And we'll go ahead with reports. Oh, Dan is here. Dan, the auditor.
You go first?
Yeah.
Well, I don't have much of a voice, but I'll do my best. I got a little bit of talking to do today. You guys are gonna get sick of me later. So I came back from my vacation and spent the weekend working on the budget. So I, all that, all that nice glow is washed right off me. I've been, I've been having a good time, but it is budget season, which is a, is a busy time, not only working on next year's budget, but after today, I will, I will work on getting everything finished so we can wrap up the final amendment to the current year budget, which we'll talk about next. I guess the next meeting is December twelfth. We'll do a final amendment of the current year budget. And just as a reminder to all departments that may be listening or what, and I'll send out an email as well, but you know, the time is probably past, but if, if it's not, if you haven't done it, do it now. Wrap up all of your final, end of the year spending. We, we try to not do a lot of spending in December because the invoices, by the time they come in, January, February, we're doing financial statements and, and we, it's, we just need to wrap up all spending, preferably by November. So the other reason that's important is as we look through all the, all the department's budgets and we want to make sure we're not gonna go over, if there's spending that gets done last minute, and some of it's unavoidable, right? There's a lot of big things that happen in December for, actually Curtis is a good example. They do big parties and things in December. And by the time those bills come in, it's too late to adjust the budget. So we just have to watch things. If you need reports or anything from my office, any, my staff or myself can get those. Just make sure we watch that. I officially tendered my resignation, which will be effective January fifth, and gave that to John. And he has contacted the Republican Party. There will be, it will, it's what they call a midterm vacancy. Even though it's one day into the new term, it'll technically be a midterm vacancy, which means the local Iron County Republican Party's task is to come up with a replacement name to give to the commissioners. And their process of doing that, they will hold a special election on December fifteenth. And that is for the Iron County Republican Party's Central Committee, which consists of all of the chairs and vice chairs and the executive council or the executive committee and any sitting Republican elected officials in the county, including our congressional people that live within the county, get ex-official status. So they will do a special election and, and come up with an appointment, which will be sworn in after that time. But I'll continue to serve, but just for the commissioners, I guess we'll have to, to work through that. My suggestion is whoever gets elected, that you, maybe you hire them, maybe immediately, so that they can come in and can spend some time, so we can do some, get some overlap in, or get some training to pass on to them. And I'm, I'm willing to do whatever is needed, just depending. I, I have talked to our auditors to, to let them know that I will be gone. Rick was quite concerned that, about this next year's audit and financial statements. Rick being the main partner at our, at our auditors. And I, I asked him if, depending on who gets elected, depending on their level of capability. As, as you know, I created the financial statements last year and I did it in-house and I did it from scratch, which is a massive, massive undertaking. I wouldn't suggest anybody at any level coming in unless they've literally been a county auditor doing it at another place to come write in. And I would include any, you know, local CPAs or, I mean, unless you've had experience doing that, especially coming in your very first year, not being familiar with the county, I just wouldn't recommend it to do it at all. So I talked to Rick. I said, is there any way that you guys would be willing to do that, to create the annual comprehensive financial report for us in association with the audit? That's what we used to always do. And he said, they probably could. They're, it would need a lot more time than they currently have scheduled. And they're pretty busy, so we, we actually have already scheduled the audit because they, they book up really quickly. And so they're gonna see if they can carve out some additional time. But he was asking if there's any way I could come back and help with that. And I just said, I don't, we, we're just gonna have to let things play out. I don't know who's gonna get elected. I don't know who it's gonna be, but I will make myself available to a limit. I mean, I, I can't come back and spend lots of time without being compensated for it. If, if it's a little bit here and there, I'm more than happy to come in evenings to train the new person, answer questions. I still, every once in a while, get a question from Enik from when I was there. Very rarely anymore. Usually it's Rob doing some analysis. He wants some help with a spreadsheet. But anyways, so I'm willing, I'm willing to come back within reason and help out. I, I am committed. I don't want the county to stumble. I don't want to have any, any interruption. And so whatever we need to do, we can do. But just to make you guys aware that that is a very, very important pressing issue that's gonna need to be solved. Other than that, we're through most of the deadlines of the, the whole tax process, the abatements. Veterans, of course, go year-round. All of our board of equalization, valuation stuff is, is pretty much all done. Now is when it gets really busy for Nicole. We do still get involved with people that, for the first time, they got their bill and there's errors and there needs to be adjustments between Carrie and Nicole in my office. We make those adjustments. You guys, of course, are able to see those and sign off of those because the, the commission has to do that. So we're still doing some of that stuff, mainly this time of the year, just hyper-focused on the budget, which I pretty much just do myself, but I've been trying to involve everybody as much as I can to help out with that. But as far as my office goes, I have the, one of the best office staff in this county. They're great. And I just, I just wanna appreciate, I just wanna say some words of appreciation. They, they run things so well. And it never has it been more clear to me than when I have been at the city doing both jobs as I transition out and they just, they're just been handling things and they're just awesome and they do such a great job. I really believe in empowering my people, giving them, giving them the ability to make decisions, help with troubleshooting, help with things that need to be done, but letting them own what they do. I'm a really big believer in extreme ownership and, and I just have great office staff. And I, I appreciate working here at the county. It's been, it's been, there's been some hard times, but I have absolutely enjoyed. I've been here for six years and it has been great, working with the commissioners, working with the other elected officials and all the other, the department heads that work so tirelessly. They, they take a lot of grief in the public eye and they don't, the public does not realize how much that they do to serve the public. Of course, Iron County is not perfect. You know, there's, there's things you drive by and you think, why, why is nobody doing this? Why is nobody fixing that? But they just don't realize all of the work that's done behind the scenes. And largely un, you know, it's kind of a thankless job. A lot of people don't understand county government and, and we just, behind the scenes, keep things running and, and not a lot of the public realizes that. But that's the job and the people that sign up for it and do it, they know that. They know that in many cases, they can make more money in the private sector, but they do it anyways. Of course, there's, there's the, the good benefits and there's the stability, but you really gotta love what you do to work in county government and city government for that, for that as well. And I've just been really proud to be a part of it. Who knows, someday, maybe I'll come back in some role at the county. I really believe in it. I, I've struggled with the decision to leave, probably as hard as anything else I've ever struggled with in my life. And, but I feel like I'm doing the right thing. I'm feeling like I'm going where I need to go. And that's, you know, a lot of people have asked me why, and that's really what boils down to. I just really feel like I need to go and do what I'm doing, even though my heart kinda wants to still be here and do what I do here because I do enjoy it. So anyways, sorry to get all emotional. This is my last quarterly report. But I just wanted it officially on the record, what a great county this is and what great people we have. And like I said, you'll hear a lot from me because I have a budget report, but I appreciate working with the commission. The auditor works pretty close, hand in hand with the commissioners and, and we got good commissioners. They care. And it's a, it's a lot of work. Without a county executive, they do a lot of work. And I don't think anybody knows what they're signing up for before they, before they come and do this job, so my hat's off to you. But that's all I have. I don't want to take all the time. Any questions for me?
I just wanna say thanks, Dan. You've been awesome. You've been a really good auditor and, and we appreciate everything you've done. And he's always been a little concerned about stepping out of his lane and we always appreciated it when he did to help us because it is a big job to be a commissioner, so thank you.
Yep. I'd like to echo that. Dan is one that's always thought outside the box, over and above and beyond his job title. You know, last year when we had the flooding, Dan was out there running a, an excavator with me and others. Just whatever it took to get things done, he was, he's always been willing to roll his sleeves up and, and do it. And I've appreciated that. And, and I've always, Dan's always, always been like a fourth commissioner. He's, he's been very involved and, and I, like Marilyn said, he's, I know Dan's worried about being outside his lane, but I've always appreciated him doing that and, and stepping in and just making sure things get done. So thank you, Dan.
What does that say about you when your favorite part of the job was when you weren't doing your job?
I do wanna say that I'm still a little mad at you, so anyway.
I'm, I'm committed to make sure that the next auditor is successful. You guys will be, you guys will be fine, so thank you.
Okay, Maria will go to tourism and Parks and Rec.
Holy cow. The big old book full.
She does. She's got awesome calendars.
Calendar and a stack of stuff to read in your spare time. So good, good morning. Things are, things are, you know, going pretty good with tourism. Inflation definitely is having an effect. Gas prices have certainly had an effect, but we're, we're still holding pretty strong. TRT collections are trending about the same as last year. And restaurant collections are up about five percent over last year. Now, some of that is, you know, of course, because of inflation, prices have risen and so your taxes are, the taxes being collected reflect that. As far as occupancy is concerned, it has fallen about five percent over last year. But our average daily rate is about eight percent over last year at this time. So that's, of course, showing that the prices are rising because the average daily rate is, has risen. But our occupancy has dropped slightly. Right now, so I wanted to talk about, talk to you about a couple of things that we've been working on. One of the things that have been happening, of course, is, you know, particularly in hospitality, we haven't had enough employees to fill the, the jobs that are available. And so last year, we formed an Iron County Economic Workforce Committee. We did this with SUU, the Chamber of Commerce, Economic Development and Workforce Services, to strategize a response. We did this through a survey, through the employers. We did focus groups with employees to kinda see where, what's happening here particularly. And this is based, this has turned into a regional response. And so the findings from that survey and from that focus group is in your packet. It's a report that SUU put together. So you can look at that. But just to kinda summarize, what we found is that the, there were a hundred and ninety-two employers who responded to the survey. And they, on average, had seventeen job vacancies reported per employer. So in fact, eighty-eight percent of the respondents unfilled, had unfilled vacancies demonstrating significant opportunities for hiring in the Five County Economic Development District, including Beaver, Iron, Washington County, Kane and Garfield. Based on this research that was done through this group, through this workforce committee, some money from the state of Utah has been acquired through a workplace-ready action response. And this is what's happened is SUU has put together a training program for hospitality and for tech, like, technology sectors. There was also one that was put together for manufacturing. Those were the, the areas in which we could see the most need. But the state already has a manufacturing response, and so this is a response for the Five County area for hospitality and also for technology. As far as we're concerned with tourism, we're concentrating on the hospitality aspect of this. And so this grant is going to allow us to train up to a hundred and twenty people who are basically underemployed or possibly unemployed, to try to get them into the hospitality industry as a career and give them the skills that are needed, that are desperately needed, based on the research that we did through the employers, to kinda help them kinda work their way up into possibly management, a management position in our community. This is no cost to the people who participate in this and it's, it's, it's quite the deal. We're, we're really excited about it. And it will be starting in January twenty twenty-three. It'll include about ten hours of really just some kind of basic soft skills, you know, like communication, customer service, time and project management. And then they're put together with a mentor and they go through ment, through some mentorship and some other additional training that will be more in line with what we need here in the tourism industry. So we're excited about this. We're thrilled that this is a, a local response to some, to a need that is happening here, particularly in the Five County area. And I wanna give kudos to SUU, particularly Melinda Thorpe and her, her group, Susan and Stephen Lizembe with Regional Services. They have been the backbone of everything that we've been trying to do through this program, so. And we're the ones that got the, the grant, which is pretty significant. Moving on, in terms of what we're doing in the office, earned media to date, and this is thanks to our communication specialist, Kaylee Pickering. We had a hundred and fifty-two media, media articles and mentions about Iron County destinations and attractions. This equates to seven point eight million dollars in advertising equivalent, reaching an overestimate and over, what's estimated at one billion desktop and mobile views. So that's money we don't have to spend in advertising. It's a third-party kind of talk about Iron County, and this is one of the best ways that we can spend our time in our office. We're gonna be finalizing our destination development plan with the Utah Office of Tourism and Coraggio Group. You were on the meeting with the stakeholders and we appreciate everyone that's participated in that. We do want to bring that to the commission sometime in January for your review. And we'll get that scheduled onto the commission agenda. Per our discussion in the budget, I did include the copy of the convention and meetings facility feasibility study that we conducted in twenty nineteen, so that you had it for your reading enjoyment. So just so that we could, I, you know, I went back and I'm like, I don't believe that we actually provided you with this feasibility study, so now you have a copy of it. It does outline the feasibility that Iron County could probably could, you know, have some sort of convention and meeting facility within the county. We could probably support about twenty thousand to thirty thousand square feet of meeting facility space. And this is based on twenty nineteen. This isn't based on twenty twenty-two. So, so the numbers probably would not be reflecting what's actually happening in terms of the costs. It gives three kind, three scenarios as to how it could possibly be developed, whether it's private-public partnership, a county standalone facility or something kind of in between. And it does outline the costs in the twenty nineteen numbers. But I think it gives you an idea that at the time, and probably even now, there is, you know, particularly because SUU's facilities are being kind of absorbed into the academic aspects. There is, you know, there is kind of a need for meeting facilities here in Iron County. And so, and if we ever wanted to pursue something, I would suggest that we do the feasibility over again. We're also working with the Utah Film Commission, Cedar City and SUU Film Department, to create an Iron County Film Ready Commission so that we can be part of the, the Utah Rural Film Incentive Program that was created by legislators in twenty twenty-one. There is grant money available to help us hire an intern to inventory catalog and photograph possible film locations in the county so that we can be ready for possible film and commercial work here in the county. Many years ago, we were the Film Commission. It's kinda transferred hands back and forth. But now we've, I think, we have brought things more together so that we can utilize the assets that we have here in Iron County, particularly with SUU and their film department. And then, of course, you have our scenic calendar, which we have been working very hard on, and I'm so excited to have it in time just before Christmas. Do you have any questions for me regarding tourism?
That training that you got the grant for?
Yes.
When is that supposed to happen?
So it has to happen very quickly. So it's going to start in January of twenty twenty-three. And it does have to be completed by the end of the year, so. So it was a very fast turnaround, but because of the fact that we had the research, we had the study, it was pretty easy. Not, I don't wanna say easy, but it was, it helped us get the funding fairly quickly because it, you know, it was justified.
Did, do you have people that are, the folks that are gonna be involved in it or do you need more or?
Yes. We, we certainly need help in recruiting people. And then we also need the mentors for, you know, because it's a hundred and twenty-plus people, we're gonna need a mentor for just about everybody. So we are gonna, we are putting that out. We are gonna, we're doing a session at what's up, Southern Utah. I don't think they call it that anymore, but in January to get more and more people involved. We do want this to be a regional report, regional response. We don't want this just to be about Iron County, even though it was coming from Iron County. We want this to be a response throughout the region.
Five County.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So we've had meetings with Five County where we've invited people to a Zoom call where they can learn more about it, facilitated by Five County, which was very nice of them. Just to get people, get more and more, especially the employers, because once we have these students who've gone through this program and have been certified, we wanna make sure that they're being hired, you know, like they're rising up on the hiring chain. And hopefully would maybe have an incentive financially because they're, they're certified in this program. So we're trying to get the employers on board, you know, so. We heard them. Now here's a response to what they were saying.
Well, that's great. I, I, yeah, I was wondering if you needed people, more people, more businesses, that type of thing. So, yeah, that's, that's good. That's a good word to get out there. So have you advertised for those folks?
We've been meeting with a lot of them. So we met with the Lodging Association. We had that hosted Zoom call.
Oh, yeah.
We're leaning heavily on the Chambers of Commerce, you know, because we have the Cedar City Chamber, but we also have the BIG, which is
Oh, yeah. The grand one.
The grant, the big. It's Beaver, Iron County, Garfield County. The BIG is the name. We're relying on them to, to, you know, really put people forward. They probably, particularly because they probably have somebody working with them who could probably rise up, but they just don't know how exactly to do that. And so this is a great program for them.
Really great, yeah.
So, but what, I'm just excited because it was a regional response, but, you know, it came from us and it came and it's our response to our communities, so. Okay, Parks and Recreation. So Bryce would like, and I too, would like to say thank you on behalf of our department for the new vehicle. It's been, it's been very nice to have, in terms of the work that we're doing. So we, we appreciate the, the county giving us the tools that we need to do the job that we've been asked to do. We have quite a few events tentatively scheduled for 2023, including We Rock, rock crawling, the bike race in May, the Summer Games, and the high school mountain bike races, region races. And there is a possibility that we might be hosting the state high school mountain bike championship in early November. So that is, that's a, that's a big economic deal for Iron County. Our collections and reservations are slightly up through October, but not a lot, but we're slightly up as compared to last year. So Wood Ranch is finally winterized. We do leave one bathroom open for sledders and keep a garbage can up there as well. And water is turned off at both Wood Ranch and Three Peaks. Work on Five Mile has concluded for the season. We have trash cans coming, thanks to Mike Worthing's grant. And, and we're, and we're also hopeful, hopeful that we'll have firefighters up there in January to do the slash burn. Soon as we have enough snow, we'll be up there, so, but it's looking more like January. We're working on more awnings at the shooting range this winter. That's been a very well-received project. It provides cover for the shooters who want cover, but it does take us a while to, to construct those.
While you're on the shooting range, can I ask something?
Sure.
So we talked about pushing up some more berms. Did you get those done at all?
No, we actually did not get those done this year, so I've budgeted for it, and I just need to work with Bruce.
Put that on the, on that, yeah, very good.
We're actually looking at possibly moving the berm back a little bit on the group area.
Have a-
A longer range, which would make it more attractive.
And a lot of people are really into the long-range shooting, so that would be really nice.
So, and we, we're trying to make sure that anyone that's holding an event at the shooting range is using the group area and not any of the bay, you know, like the open bays, because it's very difficult for us to close the range. It gets a little combative sometimes, and so any, we need to look at the group area as an area where we can close off, you know, and have events, but still kind of keep things open for the public. Which brings me to my next point. So we have had some, we've had some conflicts at the shooting range and between two groups that have been using the group area, and it's caused enough of a problem that I think we are going to limit the amount of time that they can use the range on the weekends. There was, one group is using the range without our knowledge, without making a reservation, and we had a conflict of a group that was, who had it-
Reservation.
Had a reservation. And so we're just going to have to, you know, we don't need the range to be taken for granted. There are people out there who would like to use it, and sometimes they can't, particularly on weekends, because it's being utilized by, you know-
Just the same group or something.
Same group, over and over again. So, so I, we've had a conversation with Sam, just to kind of make sure that, you know, we're in, we're doing what we need to be doing, but I think there will be some limitation put on them in the new year. And that is really all I have for Parks and Recreation. Any questions?
Okay. Thank you for calling at Wood Ranch. Appreciate that.
Takes a minute. We'll have it yet.
Thanks, Maria. We appreciate her. She does such a great job. Let's go to the sheriff. Is he here? Yeah, there he is. Ken. Well, as he's walking up, I just want to say how much I appreciate him. He just answers his phone, and whenever we have a question, he's just right there for us, and that's awesome. It's really nice for us.
Thanks.
Because we do need that quite often.
My phone is tethered to me pretty much all the time, so. First off, my apologies. I really kind of blew off the email I got from Chanel the other day, so not as well-prepared as normally, but I can go ahead and report the sheriff's office budget right now is at 76% total for the year, so we're still in good shape there. The search and rescue budget is a little bit over because of the purchase of the snowmobiles. On the search and rescue side, we've had several search and rescues already. We had one last night for a gentleman and his two young kids, two and four, that were stuck in the snow up on the Upper Basin, and we were able to help get them recovered and get it, get them out safely. So the search and rescue is very, very active, and just a reminder to people, you know, please don't do stupid things. You know, we, we've been pretty fortunate in being able to, to receive cell service long enough to be able to pinpoint people and find them, but a lot of the areas where our folks go, there's, there's not, not very good service. There's no guarantee that we're going to be able to find you and get you, you know, so please be very aware of what you're doing, especially in these winter months, and make sure that you're dressed for, for the activities that you're doing. Things could be a lot worse than they have been. We've been, we've been very fortunate so far this year. Here this week ago, last Friday, we had a countywide active shooter training that was hosted over here at, at Parwin, between the high school and the elementary. We're very appreciative to the school district for allowing us to use their facilities for these trainings, and it's been across the entire county. So we trained not only deputies, but all the law enforcement agencies, including AP&amp;P, DNR, you know, everybody that's in the county was invited, and we had representation from all those agencies, and that's extremely important to us because it ensures that regardless of what agency you're coming from, that everyone is trained the same way. And one of the things that, that we also had was an incident command portion of that training, so we had all the chiefs and, and lieutenants and whatnot that were there and received the benefit of that training as well. So we're appreciative, appreciative to everybody that went to the effort of putting that on, and we think that that's important, and we're going to continue to do that. On a personnel side, we're doing pretty good. Our agency is so young that we didn't have anybody that was either qualified or interested to go over to investigations to fill our two vacant investigative slots, so we opened that up outside. We've got a couple of good candidates that we're looking for, and we're, we, we think that we'll be able to get those filled here shortly.
And they've already been through post?
So one of them is actually retired out of Idaho, and he's been retired for four years, and because of that, he'll have to go back through post again. He can't just challenge the-
Oh, wow.
We don't do reciprocity with other states.
They do, but only, only for a certain period of time, and, and four years.
Four years.
Once, once you've been out for four years, you have to go back through and-
The whole, the whole thing?
Yeah, you have to go back through the whole thing. But we, we don't see that as being a problem. It's going to take some time, but we don't see that as a problem.
That's a real benefit, though, to have that experience, isn't it?
It is, it is, you know, you know.
Or her, is it a her or him?
It's a, it's a him. And we also have another deputy that is looking at coming over from one of the surrounding counties that we've been working with, you know, over the years, and he's expressed interest in coming over, so we're, we're looking at him to fill that second, that second bill. Then the, the third position that we have is on the patrol side, which is the canine, and I've talked about that a little bit out of Lincoln County. We've got a deputy that's interested in coming over and bringing his dog, as we help train that dog, and, and with the new sheriff coming in, they don't have interest in maintaining that program, so we think that this can be a win-win for everybody. And we're, we're looking at that. As far as just total reports, total reports, right now we're at 2,318 reports so far for the year. That doesn't include calls for service. That's just what we've actually written reports on. So our, our number's pretty high. We've got a lot of stuff going on. Over the weekend, we had two SWAT callouts. One of them was a, what is referred to as a swatting call, which was a false report, where we had a subject that called dispatch and stated that he had just shot his boyfriend and was holding the pistol to his head. When we dealt with it, it was a false call, and we ended up talking with the family that lived in the house, and everything was taken care of. The other one was in response to a stabbing in which suspect allegedly stabbed his girlfriend in the neck. And that one, we, we had some issues because his family started giving our deputies and officers grief on the perimeter. And I'm going to just make a little public statement here. This is not California, and we're not going to put up with BS. You sit there and come and screw with our deputies, I'm going to take you to jail. I'm not going to tolerate that kind of conduct. You know, this is a serious crime. Our deputies are there for a very serious purpose, and I don't care where you come from, we're not going to play your BS games. So you keep screwing with us on our perimeters, you're going to jail, period. I really don't have anything else at this time. Overall, the sheriff's office is in, in very good, very good standing. We appreciate the, the commission's support on that. Just one last thing, the one place that we are still struggling is with vehicles. Currently, we have seven vehicles that are being equipped. We're having a hard time getting vehicles. We just got word today that Ford is only going to be giving the state 56 vehicles for the entire state, so, you know, this is a continuing challenge, so we're, we're really struggling as far as vehicles go, but Wade's been doing a great job trying to round up whatever he can for us, and, you know, it looks like we'll probably end up with 10 by the end of this year, and then we're, we're not sure what we're going to get for next year, but, but that still leaves us probably about 20 vehicles down.
Is there any of our white fleet that could be converted?
I don't know. You'd have to talk with Wade.
Just a thought I had.
Yeah, I'm not sure, not sure what Wade-
Think he's been trying to scrounge up whatever he can.
Right, and he's creative.
He is. I think he's been-
He's been working hard.
Working hard at it.
We appreciate his efforts. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them, otherwise, that's all I really have.
Nope, we just appreciate you.
Did you call me this morning?
What's that?
Did you call me this morning? I missed a call from a restricted number. Now she's either you or Terry Palmer.
No, it wasn't, it wasn't me.
It's been Terry.
Terry, either that or, you know, somebody trying to sell you something.
Thanks, Sher.
Okay, thanks, Ken. Okay, we'll go to Corrections. Shalom, and she's visiting with our attorney.
All right, good morning. So we're doing pretty good. Our budget on our records is 85. I don't have official damn records to share with you this morning, but this is, our records is 85%. We have had a couple unexpected expenses. Our, our work crew equipment needed some good old repairs. Our trailer kept falling apart, and we kept trying to mend it together, but I think we're going to have to do a little overhaul on the trailer. One of our budget items that we've been watching pretty close is our culinary budget, again, so that's why I've attached that one to the back of your stuff. A dollar twenty-two a tray is what, and that's, that's pretty cheap. It's just not what we're used to. We're used to being closer to that dollar mark. Our numbers, our daily population is staying pretty cozy and consistent, and we have started transporting significantly more to the courts, which is, is good and bad, but it does keep our transportation right on their feet. But it is good to start seeing our inmates being able to go through the process and either get their sentence and move on to their new forever homes, or be able to be released. It doesn't help our work crew being able to get our numbers up for work crew inmates. Deputy Groom took on the work crew. He wasn't here for partial of the time. He had, he took some FMLA leave, so that's why our numbers are low on the work crew projects. He has, he has some new ideas, and I'm excited to see those kind of play out. He has been driving around the county to see stuff that he believes that we can fix and we can do, we can be in the public eye, and the public can see the good work we're doing. He says a lot of times we're out in the county, way far out in the county, and he says, if I could spread my time out, or my time out a little bit and do some stuff that's more visible to the community, he says that he feels like he can do some good things. We, we have three vacancies. We've had some movement out of our facility. We, Deputy Britt retired. We lost one to Washington, and we had some, one transfer to the, to the bailiff, to the bailiff position. We did hire two, which is awesome. Robert Leva came to us from California, and he actually challenged Utah Post, and he was able to complete that, which is great for the county. So he is coming to us with LEO and SFO certification. He will have to go get his basic corrections. They, they don't have a class for that until the end of February, but he'll jump in there. He's going to be a great resource for us. And Kristen Kane, he came to us from Beaver County, certified. So that has been some big wins for us over in Corrections. We do have eight long-term leaves, seven of those are FMLA, and then our active full-time military. We did, in the, the last couple of months, we had to graduate the, the Post Academy, Trenton Price and Caitlin Lacy. And our staff has been involved in some, we went to the trunk retreat, and we're doing the Jubilee of Trees, and we'll do shop with the cop, and that's, that's an exciting thing for Corrections because we don't get to be out in the community very often, and so they get to be able to see that and see all the happy faces. So that's been a good, that's good for our staff. Do you have any questions for me?
Do you, have we taken advantage of that younger, the 19-year-old?
Jen gave me a, Jen gave me a hiring notice, and I'll look over that, so maybe as the first of the year, we'd, we'll have to be really careful with how many, how many of those we-
And I'm sure you, you know-
Maybe, maybe one per crew is, is possible, but definitely something that I'll discuss with Jen and the sheriff and get on track.
Yeah, well, we may as well take advantage of that.
Yeah, I think that there's lots of young people that are eager to get into the, get into this line of work, so it just gives them a little foot in the door and-
Yeah.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, shalom.
Okay, we will go to Council on Aging. Curtis Crawford.
The Cedar and the Parwin Centers' operations are doing well, don't really have any serious problems. Our mail numbers are still growing, however, and Parwin Mills on Wheels and Congregate Mills have both increased about 30%, whereas Cedar is about 25%. Between the two centers, we're serving about over 260 mails per day. The reason that we feel that the increase of the mails is the population growth in Iron County, that most of the people- coming to the centers now, we, uh, are about eighty percent are new move-ins from California and Las Vegas where, you know, before the pandemic and a few years ago, it was about eighty percent locals and now it's just reversed that. We're, and so we're getting a lot of increase that way. Uh, Parwin just received a second sealer machine. Uh, this is a machine that, uh, seals the, uh, mills on wheels. And, uh, it would be a great help, uh, because of the increase and, uh, makes it faster to get the mills out. It also shows the growth that, uh, uh, that we're experiencing because we have to prove, uh, that we need these kind of machines and extra mill by the numbers we're serving. And so that's just an indication. Uh, last August, the state building inspector inspected both the Cedar and the Parwin Centers. Uh, they only found a couple of things that were just kind of suggestions, but they said that nothing was out of compliance. And the inspector also said that they were the best kitchens that they had inspected. And normally they inspect, uh, uh, places twice a year, but with us they only do it once a year because we're always in compliance. So just thought let you know how that goes. Uh, our health and well-being and recreation activities continue to grow as well. Uh, Cedar has nine exercise classes and fifteen recreational activities. Uh, this past year, Parwin has really, uh, taken off and, uh, developed. We have an excellent activity director who is really doing a great job. Uh, we have, uh, new, uh, classes and activities, uh, there as well. Uh, just, uh, let you know, some of them, Parwin, which we haven't had in the past, is a chair yoga and soon, soon we'll have a, a, a regular yoga class. Uh, they have such activ-, have activity, excuse me, they have, uh, activities such as bingo, various class, craft classes, doing things like decorating, uh, um, making aprons, food art and movie afternoons and, uh, puzzle activities, all kinds of stuff. And so it's good to see Parwin, uh, doing some of these things. Uh, our staffing, uh, is doing well, except we did have some issues a couple of months ago with some employees in Parwin, but we're able to solve those issues and replace a, a bus driver. Uh, just for your information, the COA department has a total of fifteen employees, uh, six cooks, uh, two bus drivers, two mills-on-wheel drivers, two activity and, uh, one outreach and one data entry and one custodian. Uh, the vehicle fleets are all doing well, in good shape. Uh, our bus service in Parwin is really growing. Uh, it's almost, uh, it's quite a challenge to meet the demand for Parwin. Uh, trying to get that figured out a little bit, but we are gaining more interest in the bus service in Cedar as well. But Parwin is really, uh, receiving the growth in that area. Uh, the buildings are doing well and maintained well, except, uh, we haven't figured out about our floor leak in the Cedar Center, North Wing. Uh, I did contact, uh, coroners, uh, they're dumbfounded like the rest of us. In fact, I, I went, uh, before I came here and just, because I knew I was gonna report that, but there was no leak today. So it's got to be coming from an outside source. Uh, I thought maybe we'd wait till the next, uh, uh, rain or snowstorm and see if it does. But you can see where the floor has been, the water coming up through the floor. It has the residue of the glue or whatever, the white, and it's just exactly the same place. It's always been it. I don't know, uh, what it might be. I thought maybe it could be a, a pipe inside the, the bathrooms. I noticed recently, uh, have no water pressure in the sinks in those basement, uh, bathrooms. I was gonna get a plumber or somebody up there to check it out. I, you know, tried to adjust them, but they're just coming out. And I thought, whoa, maybe that's my problem. But if that was the case, I'd still have water coming up now. But it's, so, I don't know. We'll keep working on it, see if we can find an answer to it. It's crazy as.
So you don't have water pressure in those sinks right now?
Uh, especially in the vents, it's just coming out just barely. And I don't know.
Oh, wow.
You know, uh, adjusted those things underneath the sink.
Those might be clogged.
Yeah, maybe unscrew the aerators and clean them out, see if they're clogged up. The aerator, maybe unscrew those.
Okay.
Just where the water comes out, yeah.
Yeah.
Or have the.
Sometimes they get little.
Okay, yeah.
Rit.
Ask Carter to get the plumber up there and see.
Okay.
We don't, we wouldn't have anything frozen, I don't think.
No, not there. I don't think that's.
Weird.
In the summertime?
Was it doing it in the summer?
Uh, no, it's just started a couple of months ago. Yeah.
That's when it got really cold.
It sounds like that clog. You may have a good idea there. We'll look into it. See if we can come up with something. Anyway, that's a.
If it was a pipe that was leaking, you'd have water everywhere. It wouldn't just be.
You're right. It'd be coming. And this leak is the other side of the building. You know, you'd have leaks coming out.
Right, it's kitty corner from those bathrooms.
Yeah, yeah, right.
What about the, uh, three-phase converter? Did you get that solid-state installed?
Uh, no, we'll wait till next year for the budget. Right now, in the winter time, it's just fine because it's cold enough. It's getting in there. So I thought I, well, actually what I wanted to do, I wanted to get five counties to pay for it. So that's where I'm gonna do everything.
Be able to get a grant from that.
Maneuver that a little bit, yeah. So.
Great.
Then if they won't, then, so that'll take about March or something like that to know.
On that board. So let me know if I can help you with that.
Okay. Uh, thank you. Appreciate it. Uh, then, uh, budget, uh, budget, uh, the last budget report we received, we were doing okay. Uh, we're meeting all of our obligations and are on time with our account payables. Overall, the budget is about where it should be. Uh, like everybody else, we're concerned about, uh, the inflation of food and fuel and those kind of things. Uh, we're keeping a close eye on those things and, uh, cutting back and looking for sales to keep our food costs down best we can. And, uh, anyway, so that's, I hope it stays that way. It's always right in the end, you know, what's going on? So, anyway, uh, any questions you have?
Nope. Thank you.
Well, thank you for all your help you give to us.
I have to say, the decorations in the senior center is, are beautiful.
Oh, thanks. Yeah, I see the Christmas ones and that.
Oh, are they all up now?
Yeah.
Oh, I'll have to come see. They're beautiful.
She spent a lot of time on it.
You do a great job.
Well, thank you. Appreciate you.
Thanks. Okay, we'll go to emergency with George Colson.
Good morning, commissioners.
Morning.
So, um, budget is pretty much, um, what it usually is. It's well within variance. The only, um, problem area is, uh, same one everybody's having. I'm, I'm over on fuel, but I don't know what to do about that. Um, it's just something we're living with right now. Uh, the rest of my budget is good enough that I'll probably be able to absorb whatever I'm, uh, I'm short on fuel into the rest of the budget. So, um, it is unlikely to, probably not likely at all, that I will go over budget. So that'll be able to absorb it. So, um, by the way, I was just talking to the sheriff, um, just kind of a, an aside. Uh, part, part of my job is to pay attention to what's happening all over the world, kind of, um, outside of Iron County, just so that Iron County will be prepared. And I've been sitting, watching the international shipping news, um, most of the weekend, this weekend, and it does not look good. It looks, um, very bad as a matter of fact. Um, because of diesel costs and because of the availability of diesel, you can't run those ships without diesel. Um, China's in pretty bad shape. Uh, you got riots and so a lot of the component parts, they're, they're, uh, they're a assembler of small components and they send it on to, to other assembly plants, but, uh, things are not looking good right now worldwide. And that's just an aside.
What about the, um, railroad strike? Is that still looming?
It's, it looks like it's gonna happen, which is gonna further exacerbate all of that. Um, one of the things that's happened internationally and nationally is because of all the shipping problems from twenty twenty-one is, um, and rail, um, rates went down. So a lot of people have switched over to rail. And now with the rail strike and the shipping problems, it's, it's, we're, we're, we're looking at some really, really bad days as far as, um, if you're looking at ordering anything and getting it on time. But most, uh, what I was talking to the sheriff about was particularly the vehicle problem. Uh, that's going to.
Even worse.
It's gonna be much worse.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We can't get the chips.
Well, yeah, yeah, the component parts are not gonna be available. Um, and the assembly of it is not going to happen because you're not gonna get, you know, for a car, it's about, I think, I think I read one time where it's like ten thousand component parts. People build different components, they ship them to another, they put some more together, they ship it to another. And so it's, uh, with all of this breaking down, it's, it's gonna be bad.
Maybe we can, uh, get some cars from Cuba.
Well, actually, the sheriff and I were just talking about that. We either gotta start building them, well, if you're gonna get cars from Cuba, you're gonna get nineteen-fifty-five Fords and Chevys. Yeah. Um, but we were talking, the sheriff and I were saying that you probably either have to start building them in county or start having them completely built in Mexico and we just drive across the border and get them and bring them over. So, anyway, I'll go into my report. That's kind of the international thing. So I took, we took the LEPC on a tour of Weko and thanks to, uh, Chief Phillips for arranging that. Um, I did a KSL tour of county. I don't know who in the county threw me under the bus with KSL, but they must've known that I just love media stuff. So.
No offense, media guy.
So.
Jeff.
He's not paying attention.
No, yeah. Um, so I, 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 I took him on a tour of the county and showed him all the flood damage. Uh, it hit, it was on YouTube. Uh, it had five hundred and sixteen views, uh, eight likes, no dislikes. I don't know whether that makes me a media star or not, um, but, you know, whatever.
Maybe.
So, uh, supported the fair. We sent hand wash, a hand washing trailer out there, command trailer, light sets and the shell, and a shelter tent. Thanks again to Chief Phillips and Cedar Fire for the set up and tear down of the tent. Couldn't do that, couldn't manhandle those things without those guys. They've become real experts at that. And the fair tells me next year that the tent worked out so well. They don't want my command trailer, but they want both tents. So.
There you go.
Yeah. So, uh, I've written a mass casualty plan. Uh, it's pending approval and revision. I've got it out to the hospitals and to the MEs and, and stuff like that to be looking at it. So as soon as that gets all together and I get all the revisions and the comments on it, I'll bring it before the commission and, and get you to, uh, look at it. We finished the CERT trailer, uh, for dispatch, the, the big trailer that I was, um, I built to have, uh, in case we lose the public safety building. I'll still be able to run dispatch. Uh, so that's completely done now. We've got it all insulated and stuff. The, this, we've got room for two dispatchers. Uh, I could, if for any reason we lost the, the public safety building, I could move two dispatchers into this trailer, place it anywhere in the county and still be able to do public safety dispatch.
Is it wireless?
Uh, yeah, we've got, we, we've got two radios in them. Um, unfortunately, and this is the thing we ran into with radios, just like my, the ones in my truck and my, and my handheld, with them making the revisions and the, and the updates on radios, the two I've got in there for dispatch are now going to be outdated and I'm gonna need a couple of new radios. So, but I'll address that next year and we'll, we'll look at that and we'll try to find a way to, to do that. Um, I assisted the Alzheimer's Association with their fundraising walk. Um, so, uh, we got that. Uh, Rich Wilson and Commissioner Blake and I did a, we got a, I got a complaint from some of the people on Cedar Highlands, um, that they, they had some properties sliding. So Rich and I and Commissioner Blake went up there and took a look at some of the houses. And it's not, I'm not an engineer, so I can't explain it the way Rich did, but it's not because of the, it's not because of the, the, the hill is sliding. It's, it's not because of that, although that still remains a, a distinct possibility. Um, it's in that, they're all in that alluvial fan up there, but it's just, there's a couple of homes that the way they've been built and on the inclines they are, they're just getting some natural slide in there. So we took a look at that and made sure that we weren't having something more serious. And Rich assures me that right now that we're, we're good. So, um, supported the SOU homecoming, uh, with light sets, took a couple of light sets out there and made sure that they had plenty of lights for their nighttime activities. Um, right now, I'm in the process of updating the county's dam emergency operation plans. Um, there's actually eighteen, there's like eighteen dams in this county. Uh, yeah, I wasn't even aware of that. When I started looking, I realized how many dams we had. So, um, I've got still some that haven't, haven't sent me the, an updated emergency operations plan. Most of them did. Uh, Mr. Bullock, um, was nice enough to hand deliver his. So it was very good. Um, I've been providing , uh, need help and we're safe signs to, uh, Eneek and Paragona, uh, for some of their older, uh, some, their older residents and people with problems, uh, so that they would be able to, you can put it in your window, it's visible from the road, you'd be able to tell. It's color-coded as well as written. So, uh, and I'm gonna start doing that for the whole county. I attended the LEPC conference. Um, I finished out last year's EMPG, which pays part of my salary. And I, uh, successfully applied for next year's. Uh, and I just completed the Everbridge billing for the counties. And Maria tells me I've got one of the checks sitting down at the, uh, down at the, um, visitor center. So I'll be able to put that money back into, uh, my line item for public information. So, that's it.
That's it.
Any questions?
Thanks, George. Appreciate it. Okay, um, that concludes our departmental, except for commission. And Paul, if you wanna go first?
Uh, our fire station in Newcastle's coming right along. It's nearly complete. Um, that's gonna be a great asset to the West Desert, uh, folks out there and give the community a little, little spot there to gather as well. Um, we appreciate all that's been involved. Reed Erickson, all his, all his efforts and, and, uh, precision development for their good work, all the subcontractors. We attended a UAC fall conference two weeks ago. It was a great conference. Um, you, those, you know, they, they cost us some money to go to those, but they are beneficial. You can, you know, it's not always the presentations, it's the, it's the, uh, visiting with other commissioners and other folks and getting ideas and suggestions and how they do things in their counties, which is, which is good. There was one presentation I wanted to bring up, uh, that Flipco did. Um, and they talked about the travel, the management, travel management and roads that the BLM are gonna start looking at. And it's, they, they stress the importance of having a, a, an Iron County travel management plan in, in written. Um, Commissioner Wood and I met with Mike Werthen. I called Kendall, um, and talked to him about creating a map and, uh, he's gonna start working on that. There's a map on Mike Werthen's office wall that is really extensive that the commissioner's approved in two thousand and eleven. It's, it's mostly the RS two four seven seven roads, but it's got a lot of detail on that map. Kendall found the electronic version of that. He's going to do a multi-layered map that will be online, that will be very beneficial to our county. And it's just, the, the advantage of having a map with all the roads listed before the BLM does theirs is they have to consider those roads if they're listed on, on our plan. And so it's important that we get that done. Uh, we're working on that. The justice court, uh, you know, they've talked, the legislature's talked about, uh, the justice court reform. Um, but they've, they've, I think they've backed off from that a little bit. They're looking at a phased approach, uh, with a potential recession coming. Um, they're looking at, uh, scaling that back, but we'll see what happens with the. coming. They're looking at scaling that back, but we'll see what happens with the legislature this year. We're also going through the recertification of our justice court. Lori Eichelberger's working on that. I talked to her this morning just to get an update, and we're in good shape with that. Judge Miller will be retiring this year, and then Judge Dunlap will be assuming that role as, as a full-time judge in that, in that area. I just, John, I wanted to, I know you don't want to hear this, but I didn't get my ballot yet. It's been three weeks. I did, out of, out of curiosity, I asked the administrator of what's happening in Cedar City and Iron County to do a poll yesterday. There was, there was 169 votes. There was one, there was one question, I received my ballot before the election, I received my ballot after the election, or I did not receive a ballot. 61% said they did not receive a ballot, 2% said they received it after the election, and 35% before. And that's far from scientific, but I thought it was interesting.
What's the first number?
35% was, I received my ballot before the election, 2% received my ballot after the election, and 61% said they didn't receive a ballot. I'm still baffled where thousands of ballots are. I mean, if, if Pitney Bowles said they didn't pull them back, I just don't understand where those ballots are.
Yeah. Any-
One sec, sorry. It's Reed Erickson calling.
Oh.
Yeah, I don't know. I-
We have no idea, do we?
The attorney has been kind of wrapping up their investigation, and I know that Pitney has continued to work on their people, but I don't have solid answers right now.
So, according to them, when they listened to our last commission meeting, they said that, that they didn't pull anything back. It all went into the system, right? So, it should be-
Yeah.
It should be coming, showing up at some point. Anyway-
I mean, and, and to be clear, they received those on October 13th.
Right.
So, yeah.
Yeah, there's, it's, I don't know.
And I haven't received any word as to, you know, them being, because the, most of the postal service is, is still keyed up looking, you know, and if they, if they see them, they're going to let me know, and I haven't heard anything.
I put that same question out on Iron County elections. There was nine that responded that they had not received ballots. Nobody said they had. There was APC four didn't receive. And then I, on my page, there was 14 knows, and one said their spouse received theirs, and they didn't receive theirs. So, there's still a lot of people that haven't received ballots. And I'm just, it just baffles me where they are. So, anyway.
It's, it's maddening for me.
Yep, I'm sure. But that's my report. Thank you.
Okay, I'll just reiterate, the UAC conference was, was awesome. It was very good. It's always good to visit with those other commissioners and, and the others. And, and we have some good classes too, for sure. A shout out to the CJC for their Dancing With the Community Stars. It was awesome. I saw on Facebook that they, they said $90,000 that they raised, which is phenomenal. I think they may have raised a little more last year, but, but it was, it was great and, and really fun, and, and really enjoyed that. I think we'll go ahead and take a little break. Let's take about five minutes, and we'll come back for our 10 o'clock meeting, and we'll go forward with that.
Reed forgot his stuff, so he's, he just turned around, but it's not gonna-
Oh, so he wants to be put- You ready?
Yeah.
Do you want to wait until he comes back, I guess? Because he's first up.
Reed was on his way.
Oh, then he had to turn around. He forgot, like, a flat or something.
His flash drive, yeah.
Oh, flash drive.
So, and I, I'm just going to look and see, I can't remember what he had on.
You, you had a couple of these things, but he probably had more, you know-
Yeah.
Of his stuff that he has to-
And he likes to kind of have that little drone and stuff. If you had to, you could skip ahead to HR, to Personnel if we weren't here.
Oh, we could. We could, definitely. Yep, yep.
Should we let Blaine? Blaine's going to go, isn't he?
That's true.
Oh, should we?
I think we ought to let-
Should we do him first?
Well, the OTVs, they generally-
Because this is going to take a while.
I think we ought to let Blaine go, and then-
Yeah. Should we do that? Yeah.
You think? I mean, I don't know.
It wouldn't hurt.
Blaine, are you interested in this, in the budget information? You want to, want us to put you first?
No, no, our budget.
Our budget?
Or should we put you first?
First, so you can be done and go.
I don't, well, I'm going to stay anyway.
You'll stay anyway?
Okay.
All right.
Okay, we'll, we'll wait, Dan.
I'll watch you guys.
Somebody needs to.
Exactly. You ready? Okay. Welcome back to our 10 o'clock meeting, Monday, the 28th day of November 2022. And we will start out with number one, agenda item number one, public hearing regarding the 2023 proposed final budget.
I'm going to do a presentation before the public hearing.
Yep.
Also, I emailed these to you. Normally, I don't have this complete, ready to go. But I got it down in my folder.
I love, I love Dan's presentations, because they always have a lot of color.
Yeah. That'll go on the, that'll go on the website, and we'll submit that to the, the state auditor, assuming it gets adopted next, in the next commission meeting. Today's just the public hearing. We'll adopt the budget next, next time, and also amend the budget. So, I'll give a quick, hopefully, I'll make it quick. I tried to cut out quite a few slides, but I'll talk a little bit about the budget and the state of the economy, how it affects Iron County, and, and hence the considerations that are built into the budget. First, I'm going to talk a little bit about the economy, national and local, and how it'll affect us. Talk about inflation, potential recession, and, and then the financial year 2023 budget highlights. And then, any questions? So, first, a lot of debate. Are we in a recession? Are we not in a recession? This is a, this is a real debate amongst economists right now. The technical definition is a significant, widespread, and prolonged downturn in economic activity. If you look at US real GDP growth, we had two consecutive negative quarters of, of GDP growth, or the opposite of growth. That has been heralded by a lot of economists as the definition of recession. The reason why it's under debate is partially political, and partially because there's, this is a weird economy that we're in right now. And there's, it doesn't look like normal recessions, specifically when you look at our employment, and you look at a bunch of other things going on. Oh, I'm bumping this. I was trying to figure out what was going on. So, anyways, regardless of whether we're in one or not, it is a, it is a big, big thing to watch, and are we getting into one? What's going on? First thing I want to talk about is the inverted yield curve. This is something that only happens once in a rare amount of time. And this is what a normal yield curve looks like. And if you're not familiar with it, with the yield curve, this is something that a lot of people keep their eye on. This is what a normal yield curve looks like. This is what a normal yield curve looks like. And what we're talking about is, we're talking about the three-month treasury bonds versus thirty-year treasury bonds. Normally, when you buy a bond, the longer term of the bond, you get more of a yield that comes from the bond or the money that the investor makes on the bond. And normally, you see an upward sloping trend on the yield curve. Every once in a while, it's very rare, maybe only happens a decade or two, the yield curve inverts. And what that basically means is you can get more money by buying a short-term bond than you can of buying a thirty-year bond. That's really, really odd to ever see that. And it is often considered the harbinger. This usually happens right before a recession. So just basically what happens is investors are nervous about the future and they expect short-term rates to fall. And so with so many investors expecting rates to fall, they crowd into the longer-dated bonds. And so much demand for those bonds actually, as they're trying to lock in that higher rate, actually causes the rate to fall. So basically, this is something that the, the market forces do. There's so much demand for the longer-term bonds because people are so worried about what's gonna happen in the next few months and year and years that they, the demand for the long-term stuff is so high that it actually causes it to invert and make the value of a short-term bond higher. So it's really rare. In the last, since nineteen sixty-five, this is when the, the inverted yield curve, basically the short-term rates are higher than the long-term rates is the red. These gray bands are the recessions that we've had. You'll notice what happens right before some of these recessions. You'll see that the year, yield curve inverts and then there's a recession, right? So this is what just happened in twenty twenty. And right now, this is where we're at with the inverted yield curve. So there's another thing that the New York Fed publishes and they, they have a recession probability. And this blue line is when they think that there's a probability of a recession coming in the next few quarters. So right now, and you see that right, kinda when that starts to get really high, then there's been a recession that's happened afterwards. These are tools, they're really nice when they happen to line up exactly perfect. There is a saying that says that economists have predicted five out of the last three recessions. So people always like, like to predict recessions that sometimes never happen. But it, it, right now, their probability as of just a few days ago, they're at a, they're saying there's about a twenty-three percent chance that the US will be in a recession one year from now. That could mean that there will be a recession before then, whatever. But another indicator of recessions, and this is almost a self-fulfilling prophecy. What drives the American economy is consumers. It's really not as much what businesses are doing, it's what consumers are doing. And consumers, when they think everything is good, they spend money, they invest, they borrow, they, the cash is flowing. And that keeps the economy doing well. When consumers get worried, they do the exact opposite. They, they hold on to their cash. Their savings rate starts to climb. And them holding on to their cash actually can create the very problem that they're worried about. So economists will watch the Index of Consumer Sentiment. This is published by the University of Michigan. And this is where we're at right now, this consumer sentiment. You can see it dropped right here with twenty twenty with COVID. And then it came back. And then about when everything started to re-happen in the fall of last year, COVID kind of spiked again. Everybody's money that they got given to them by the government ran out. Consumer sentiment has started to really fall. And then, of course, inflation hitting the consumers has really got the consumers spooked. So that's another indicator that what is going on in the economy. As far as local economy, Utah, our real GDP growth, this was a quarter two of twenty-two, was negative one point one. The last time I did this presentation, a year ago, it was positive. Utah had one of the strongest economies. So even Utah, we're seeing, in fact, all of these numbers, with the exception of the dark blue, are actually negative. The dark blue are the only ones that have seen year-over-year GDP growth. The majority of the country is seeing that negative GDP growth, right? Shouldn't surprise anybody. And yet, then we look at unemployment and it doesn't tell the same story. The problem with unemployment, you can see what happened here with COVID right here. This was this recession. Of course, unemployment spiked. We were at the lowest levels everywhere. So the blue is, is total employment. And the green is the unemployment rate, right? So we were seeing historically low levels of unemployment before COVID hit. And then, of course, it spiked. And then it resumed back to where we were. You can see that employment got right back on track in Utah. It didn't do it across the country. But in Utah, we got back to our pre-COVID employment levels. In fact, we're even higher than our pre-employment, even considering the, the, the slope that we were on. Our year-over-year gain was three point four percent and our unemployment rate right now is at two percent. That is, that is the lowest it has ever been and that's ridiculously low. It's too low. That's too many open jobs right now. I don't have the graph on here, but they've actually seen the employee, the, the employee participation rate. It was at a, it was at a level and then COVID happened and a bunch of people dropped out of the workforce. And we were trying to get the participation rate back up and it came up to about eighty percent of where it was and now it started to fall again. So the way that the economists are interpreting this is a lot of the, a lot of the boomers that had kind of restarted to re-enter, a lot of the women that, that were out of the workforce during COVID. Only a certain amount of them came back and then some have started to leave again. So I don't think we'll ever get back to the employment rate that we were at. And it started to fall a little bit again, which is why we're seeing unemployment getting so incredibly low. So that.
So to be clear, part of that is there are fewer people participating in the workforce.
Yes.
Yeah.
Choosing not to participate in the workforce. And a lot of those are of the baby boomer generation that are just deciding, you know what, this is, I'm done. A lot of women just didn't enter, re-enter the workforce after COVID and have decided to stay home. County employment, I don't have the exact number, but Iron County employment is above five percent year-over-year. So Iron County's employment is, is, is looking really good. We have some of these, some of these counties, just especially the more rural counties, don't really have the strong economy. Any, any way you look at it, Iron County is becoming more and more similar to Washington County. We don't quite have the weather to drive what they do, but we're definitely get all the spillover. And we are getting more of a diverse economy in Iron County, which is a good thing. We need the wages, so you need the jobs to continue to, to work on those wages. One interesting thing, home values have finally peaked. We wondered when and if it would ever happen. Yellow is the, is the Utah line. And you see right here, it peaked and it has started to decline, which was good. I mean, we were just at uncontrollable runaway inflation on, on home values. Blue is this, is the national average and yellow is Utah average. If you, we added Idaho to this, you would see Idaho has dropped way down. The Idaho is, they were on the leading edge of, of home values and now they've seen some significant pullback. We saw like Boise and Vegas in the last recession really crashed and you're seeing Boise leading the charge as well now, so. To some degree, that's healthy because it was so overinflated. Of course, we don't wanna see a crash, but we do need it to come back to earth a little bit and we're starting to see that. The median home value in Utah is five hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars versus the United States at three hundred fifty-seven. Change in home value is, is lower again because we've started to see ours peak. One good number on here, you'll notice the foreclosure rate is still really, really, really low. The last time I did this, a year ago, it was at point oh one. So luckily, we're not seeing the housing market crisis that we did in two thousand eight. Inflation is a big deal. However, we're starting to see some, some moderation of inflation. This is the one-year look at, this is the, oh, I got too many acronyms bouncing around in my head. This is the, the main indicator of inflation, which is, help me out, anybody? Thank you, Tyler. CPI. CPI has, has started to moderate. We're still at, you know, this is a, this is, these are monthly numbers here of a one-year look. This is, this is a, a look at the last five years. And you can see here it peaked and it's starting to come down. That's moving in the right direction. The big debate, of course, with economists is what we see happen is we see the, the Fed react. The Fed pushes up interest rates. Inflation starts to moderate. The Fed then gets a ton of political pressure to drop interest rates because they triggered a recession. We saw this happen in the eighties and so they backed off on interest rates and it came roaring back. Inflation came roaring back. And so then they jacked up interest rates and it moderated. And, and then, and it, inflation came roaring back. So it wasn't until Paul Volcker came in and he said, I'm gonna kill this inflation if it kills the country. And he jacked interest rates way up and left them there for a long time.
And why don't they just, I mean, why did, why did they drop interest rates to two and three percent? I mean, that's what caused, why not, why not leave it maybe three, four?
The trouble, the trouble with inflation is we only really have one tool and it's a really poor tool. I mean, to jack up interest rates just creates pain and it has to create enough pain for enough time that one of the biggest drivers of inflation is wage inflation because it becomes this self-fulfilling cycle. Everybody is competing. And, and that's what I really worry about, especially with unemployment being so low, is that we will continue to just battle with wages and increase and increase. And with more money, there's more money spent and it continues to just feed this animal of inflation. I hope the Fed is diligent. They would get interest rates high and leave them there long enough. But we are seeing some moderation with inflation. There's another indicator of this. If you look at commodity prices, I apologize, this was the best graph that I could find, but this is like fuel, food and commodity mills price, you're seeing that they're actually starting to moderate as well. We're still experiencing high dollars and, and inflation, but when commodities are dropping, that's the underlying cost of, of what it costs to do everything. They've started to moderate in the past few months. So that's a good, that's a good indicator. Let's hope that continues to be the case. Inflation is just, it tears up our employees, it tears up the county. We just, it, it is, it is a monster. Of course, the Fed funds, this is the last twenty years of the Fed funds rate. We are right here right now and the Fed is already taking heat. And they're planning on doing another fifty basis point increase in the Fed funds rate. Personally, I hope they keep, I hope they just keep strong. It, it will be a little painful, but we've just gotta, we've gotta beat inflation. You can see the effect on the thirty-year mortgage rate. It is now jumped way up. This, of course, is the last forty years. I don't know if you guys ever, did you guys buy a home back when interest rates were what they were? I mean, even at six percent, it's lower than when I started buying homes. So, but we're gonna continue to watch interest rates climb. So let me summarize. There's a bunch of weird stuff, right? I got this from Zion's Bank. Interest rates are increasing. Economic growth is uncertain. Job creation is increasing. So green is good, red is bad, blue is neutral. Unemployment being low, that's a neutral thing, right? I mean, we don't wanna have a bunch of unemployment, but if it's too low, it can be problematic. Wage growth is moderating. See, we need wage, and I don't, I didn't have a, of a, a thing in here of wage growth, but it is starting to moderate as well. Although it is still, you know, year-over-year higher. Labor force participation is increasing, but it's starting to, we think we've probably hit a plateau on that. Consumer confidence is low. That's, that's one of the bad things. Inflation is, is really high, but it's starting to drop a little bit. Housing prices are starting to drop and the Mountain West region is resilient and strong. So now to get to the actual budget, and there's a reason I set the table with this because as we try to plan what we're doing with a county's, you know, sixty-plus million-dollar budget, we have to, we have to plan for what's happening. We have to plan when it comes to salaries and wages. We have to plan when it comes to whether we hire or not. How much money do we spend on capital? What do we do with our employees? We're watching benefits. We have to compete with very few employees out there. And we also have to factor in what is gonna hit and how will it hit the county and how will it affect us? So I always like to start, no new tax increases that we, that we have built in. That's something that people always wanna watch. This is when we, if we were to ever do a tax increase, this is what would trigger it, would be in this meeting. Well, actually, the meeting next time. Salaries and wages, I, I think the public is pretty aware, but we did a, we did a large correction mid-year. We actually reinstituted the step-in grade program. The county had been kind of floating adrift for some time since like two thousand eight with not any real specific. We tried a couple of different wage salary programs and it was just kind of year-to-year, we just kinda did whatever. There was a, quite a while there where there wasn't anything done. So when we reinstituted the step-in grade system in the middle of the year, what we did is we actually brought all of the current employees to the, the steps are determined by how many years of service you have. So we actually didn't increase the wage ranges. We just took employees and we moved them into their current range that they already been had, that they had already, should have been at, had we continued step-in grade. That in and of itself was really expensive. And we did a small COLA, I think we did a one percent COLA. Normally, we would be doing that type of stuff at the year end as we go into the next year. We felt that we were having such a hard time hiring. We were, we were losing employees, especially in law enforcement, was, was really hurting us. So we did it mid-year. The total impact to salaries and wages was two point four million. And what we did is we moved everybody to the twenty twenty-three step. We didn't move them to the twenty-two, two step. We moved them to the twenty-three step, six months early. So that was done mid-year, twenty-two. So we don't have any additional increases being done right now for twenty-three's budget. We don't have any additional COLA being done for twenty-three's budget. It was just what we did mid-year and we brought everybody to the twenty-three level. So the next increase will be at the end of twenty twenty-three, assuming the world hasn't come to an end and where you don't have any money. So we don't have any additional COLA budgeted for this to take effect in January. Revenue picture. Revenues have been strong. In fact, they've been really, really strong. We are seeing signs that they're starting to taper off. Tourism, we're starting to see some signs that tourism is, is starting to fall off. And oh, I guess I didn't finish. You guys get it all at once. It's very difficult to forecast revenues. The past three years have been a forecaster's nightmare as we try to figure out what's going on. With a lot of the forecasts, we, we were really hesitant. The Kid and Gardner Institute, which studies the Utah economy, they work for the governor's office and they provide all the forecasting for the governor's office, has projected a three percent increase in Utah's economy in twenty twenty-three. The reason they feel so good about that is just Utah has the most diversified economy of all the fifty states and very strong economy. And so they've built a three percent increase in. And so that's, that's what, and, and again, sales tax is tricky because, yes, we're seeing effects of a recession and effects of inflation, which is, which is a little bit of a, of a downward effect on sales tax. However, inflation means, cause sales tax is a percentage of the dollar spent. So as inflation happens, there's technically more dollars being spent, even if the purchasing power has gone down for the individual spending them. The, the impact is, is that we do collect, that is an upward pressure. So which is gonna be stronger? The negative pressure of, of a recession and what's going on or the higher impact of more dollars being spent because of inflation? What is our sales tax gonna look like? So that's, that's really tricky. We did build in a decrease in tourism taxes and in building revenues. We do, we do expect those to slow in twenty twenty-three. A lot of things we just forecasted flat and some things we forecasted going down. The reason that's important is because that's the amount of money that we have to spend next year. So again, really tricky. There is another thing that we're, we've just been made aware of, although it is not factored into our budget, that we have been made aware that the county will be able to receive some additional dollars through another ARPA program. The county's got a lot of COVID money. And I do have to say that I've seen some of the dumb things that cities and counties have done with their COVID money. And I can proudly say, Iron County has not done any dumb things with our money. We have, we have done some, we did, we did a, the very first, when businesses were all shut down, we did a, we did a business grant that helped locally. We did buy some of the things that we needed, everything that we bought. We made sure it had a dual purpose. We made sure it had a dual purpose use, so we could use it after the pandemic was done, it wasn't just a wasted dollar. And then the rest of it, we have all pocketed, we have put in the bank, I mean, Capital Projects Fund, putting it aside for this. Large, large, large expenditure of the jail that we have to build. So to be able to reroute most of that COVID money to put towards a new jail. That we don't have to now borrow and increase taxes. With instead of, you know, putting this money to to that use, I think is one of the best things that we could do. We did, we were just made aware of another program. Which the county will receive approximately five point six million dollars. We just, we just, at our recent conference, we're made available, we're made aware of that. So we have started the paperwork to get that and it is not factored into the budget. But we will have to amend the budget to receive that money as revenue and figure out exactly what we want to do with it. I, I won't, I won't be here.
Through NACO?
Yep.
Put that forward and it was in conjunction with public clans, it was a.
Yep.
It was a.
It's, in fact, the use of the money is identical to Pilt. With one exception. You cannot spend this money on lobbying the government. And I love that exception. I think that's, I think that should be in every grant. So that's the one, that's the one withhold withholding that they, on this money is that we can't use it to do any lobbying. Which we wouldn't be planning on doing with anyways.
So Dan, and maybe we can talk about the one percent, so because NACO helped get the five point six million. For us, for Iron County and and other counties proportionally. There, there's a movement to. They're they're wanna, because we rely so heavily on Pilt, which is payment lieu of taxes. And the SRS was state rural schools, those funds, because we rely so heavily on them. NACO would like to create a. A center where they would basically, and this is my question for you, Dan, is they want us to basically give one percent of that back. They're asking all counties to give one percent of that back to help with that long term goal of. Seems like every year we have to pressure the legislative bodies in Washington DC to give us Pilt. And so.
It's always, it's always dangled.
But isn't that lobbying the one percent?
Right. I think if we were to pay it to a lobbyist, that would be a problem, we're gonna build a center. I think it's a valid question, so we need to make sure that that's that's doable. Every year, when the, when the, and we're about to see this. The federal government is gonna start arguing about whether to keep the government open and what things they want to fund. We're gonna see that in the next, next year. And sometimes they hold the, they hold the government hostage to try to apply leverage. One of the things that is always thrown on the chopping block is Pilt. And if we were to lose Pilt, it would cripple Iron County. It's, it's three and a half million dollars that comes in to our general fund and municipal services fund. That's three and a half million dollars, it's operating that we literally pay employees with and keep the lights on with. And so everybody knows what that is.
Just still pennies on the dollar.
It's pennies on the dollar of what we would receive in property taxes if we didn't have so much federal lands. So that's the deal that was cut way back a hundred and some odd years ago. And every year that kind of gets on the chopping block and so we have to debate. Do we pay a lobbyist, and we have in in years past, different lobbyists to continue that fight? To make sure that all of Congress and the presidents and the White House understand how important this is to us. Because sometimes they forget, they think, ah, yeah, those guys out there in the West, they're just out there kicking manure, they don't know anything. And anyways, so if we allocate one percent of this grant. To go towards NACO to build this center, that will help continue that fight and create more of an establishment. As much as I hate creating any more of an establishment in Washington, that's what we're considering, so anyways, we'll, we'll bring that up on a future agenda to talk about it, but. Other than that, the county has to decide what to do with the other ninety nine percent or the entire one hundred percent, so. Good luck with that decision, I will, I won't be here, but. Okay, total budget year over year has fallen, last year we were at six point seven million, this year we've dropped to six point four million.
Sixty seven and sixty four?
Yep.
Okay, you said six point seven.
Sixty seven million down to sixty four. I love that John corrects me because sometimes I, my brain gets ahead of my mouth. My brain gets ahead of my mouth. That'll go, of course, back up when we factor in, they'll probably do it in two payments over two years. If we do get that money, that five point six, you can go ahead and add two point seven five, two point three to that number. This is a graph that shows the revenue by type. That comes into Iron County. This is the county in aggregate, all of the funds together. Just kind of shows you the different distribution of of where our money comes from. Of course, the biggest single factor in there is property tax. And followed by sales, no, followed by fines and fees, that's any of the, everything that we do. From a service based perspective, including our enterprise funds. Any of the fees that we collect for services the county provides, I don't think enough people realize. All of the facets that the county is involved in our citizens' lives.
So Dan, one thing I think we need to bring up is that the property tax, which is twelve, twelve million, two fifty seven.
Yeah.
So that still only represents about, what is it, seventeen percent of what we collect totally?
Yeah, the county collects all of property tax and then distributes the majority of that out to the school and the cities.
So and maybe I could bring this up now, but we've gotten beat up pretty hard this year on people's property taxes going up, we've all experienced it. And Nicole explained it best to me is that. You know, and typically in government, you need this much money to operate the government and if home values, property values increase. Then generally, government will lower taxes, so that you still get the same amount of money, but. And and there was a school bond that was passed, so that's part of the increase, we did not increase taxes in Iron County. But the way she explained it to me was that the state of Utah. Instead of lowering the rate, they have a fixed rate and it's fixed, been fixed for years.
For five years.
For five years and so the fact that the property values went up, the state didn't lower theirs, they just have that fixed rate, so. If you have a complaint, you may want to call your legislature.
That was, that was specifically on education.
Yes, and so education is flush with cash right now because, because they're raking it in right now with.
Yeah, when they fixed it. Five years ago, I think this was the fifth year or the fourth year of that five year thing where they pegged the rate. The legislature pegged the rate. I don't think they knew the amount of inflation in home value was gonna do. And hence a pegged rate, how much revenue that would bring in. I mean, it has brought in a massive amount of revenue into the state education coffers. Had they known that it was gonna, and and the effect was an increase, so if you're, and and what, and and what Paul said is absolutely true. If your home value goes up thirty percent, on average, everybody's home value goes up thirty percent. The rate will fall thirty percent and you'll pay the same amount of tax. On average, now everybody's home is not gonna go up by the exact same amount, some people's home went up fifty percent. And if the average was, say, twenty two or something like that, then they're gonna pay a bigger piece of the pie, so they'll pay more in tax. If their home rate, if their home value only went up ten percent, then they'll actually receive lower taxes. And that's, that's generally, that is how it works, except for when you have something like the state who pegs their rate. And and that rate that they pegged was only part of your total taxes that you pay. And then, of course, this was the first year of the school bond. And Parwin City did a tax increase, so if you lived within Parwin City, then the city municipal rate actually. Didn't fall as much, it still fell a little bit, but it didn't fall as much. Leading to more revenue coming into the city, so anyways, yep. So this is, I mean, we have a lot of funds, these are just some of the major funds in terms of total revenue. Just so you know, this, this kind of shows what funds the general fund. You gotta ignore the yellow because that's interfund transfers that happen. But other than the interfund transfers, you can see kind of the makeup of of what runs our general fund. So you have sales tax, you have property tax, reimbursements and rents and fines and fees. This is one of the larger funds, which does all pass through money, this is the Iron County Community Development Renewal Agency. The road fund is funded by fuel tax and then also big fat transfer from Municipal Services Fund. The Pilt Fund is really big, of course, then that money then gets transferred out. But to the general fund and municipal services fund, landfill is primarily funded by fees, right? It's an enterprise fund. TRT, this is Maria's main fund, is funded by tourism taxes, so. You can see the fleet fund is mostly funded by transfers this year. Eventually, that will become, it's just an internal service fund, it'll be funded by its own internal fees as it builds the other entities, so. Anyways, total size of the budget, you can kind of see the relative size of the different funds here. And here's another view of that, that shows you the size of the general fund. Versus Municipal Services Fund, this is where Sheriff Patrol is, the jail is within this budget, we have a lot of. So the general fund is nineteen million. You see all these different funds, all these different functions of the county and the relative size of their budgets, right? Our total county in aggregate, this shows you that the type of expenses that it spends. In capital versus operations and of course in red is personnel. The single biggest thing we do at the county is is our people. You know, it's, it's our attorneys, which are in court, both on the defense side, actually, the defense side would be under operations. The, it's the prosecutors that are on salary that they're gonna show up in personnel. Everybody in the courthouse that performs all of these factors, most of the courthouse budgets of these different. The majority of their budget, ninety percent of their budget is people. And so when we, when we talk people, when there's things that affect how much we have to pay our people because of market forces. It's a big, big, big impact to the county. And then, of course, nine million dollars of our six, six point four million dollars is, is. It's, it's real, but each fund, you may do a transfer, on one fund, it shows as an expense, on the other, it shows as a revenue. So that's not money that came into the county, it's money that gets transferred around within the county, but each fund. By the way, we have to do our governmental budgeting, has to show it as a revenue. So of our six point four, sixty four million dollar budget, nine million of it is interfund transfers and appropriations from fund balance and things like that. So anyways.
Just moving the decimal, Dan, what's this?
I just keep moving the decimal, I, I don't know. I don't like big numbers, they scare me, no, I'm just teasing. So again, this is the same thing of our major funds, these are the expenses that make up our major funds, so you see here the general fund. Eleven million of our nineteen million in the general fund is personnel. Anywhere you see red, that's where our personnel is is spread out. Now, again, I've only showed you the biggest eight funds, but we have, you know, thirty funds or something like that, they just get smaller and smaller. The graph would be incomprehensible if I had all the funds, it would look stupid. But you see, here's municipal services is also big where a lot of our people are. Renewal Agency, the Road Department, a lot of people think that we just spend all that money on 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 asphalt and things, well, a good chunk of it is actually our personnel, right? You can't do things without people. And here is expenses by major department, again, we have even more departments, fifty plus departments, these are just the big ones. And this is what makes up those, those things, so. Is the sheriff still here? Look at all those people that the sheriff employs, this, the two single biggest departments we have is the jail on the left. And the sheriff, we just said sheriff, but that's our patrol. It's our people, our people is how we, is what we do, that's how we run government. You see, it's something like the Road Department has a lot more in operations and capital, but still have a lot of people. Solid Waste has people and capital and our fleet is all capital, right? We have two employees, but it's all capital. Information Technology, a lot of people, attorneys, look at those darn attorneys right there. And the assessor is almost as bad. No, we love our, we love our attorneys and assessors. Anyways, so just on to a few, a couple notable items and then I'll wrap up. This is the year three, I put that in quotes because. Of course, COVID and supply chain just wrecked our implementation of our fleet, sheriff talked about it in his, in his report. We have just not been able to get the vehicles, we budgeted for them, we've set the money aside and the vehicles haven't come in. And we keep placing new orders out ahead of the current orders that we have. And at some point, we hope the supply chain glut, or the opposite of a glut will clear and will get vehicles that will come in. If it all happens in one year, we may have to amend the budget, we keep setting aside the money and budgeting it and then we, the vehicles trickle in. So we should, technically, this should be year three, which was the final year of the ramp up of our fleet. And so we budgeted and we'll see what happens, but we're probably gonna have to adjust the budget if we hopefully get a bunch of vehicles that come in. Instead, we're just kind of limping along. Of course, the single biggest capital item is the new corrections facility. I wasn't really sure what to put in the budget, we'll just have to play it out by ear and see what happens. But what we're actively doing is we're, we have a site selection committee that's meeting. I went ahead and I put one point one million dollars in land acquisition in the budget, that's what we had last year. We're not sure if we'll actually spend that, we may spend more than that, we may spend less than that, it depends on how many acres, where we buy it. And all of that stuff, so that doesn't necessarily mean anything other than it's a placeholder in the, in the budget. We are now considering doing a bond election. If we can get the design done, we can get the site acquired and we can get it, everything bid out. We're looking at potentially putting on the twenty twenty three ballot a bond election. That could potentially change as well, there's nothing in the budget about that. The only thing in the budget is to actually acquire land. To do a bond election in November doesn't mean that we're gonna get any money that would come in in twenty twenty three anyways. The money wouldn't come in until the bond takes effect, in the soonest we would get money out of, off of that would be twenty twenty four, you try to coincide that with when your payments would start. And we probably, I, I don't even know exactly the timing of that, because it's gonna take a year or two to build a jail, so. These are just things that are on the horizon, we're gonna have to work through and see, and we don't even exactly know exactly what the design is gonna look like or any of that stuff, so. This is just the single biggest capital project that has been on the map for a couple of years now. In prior years, I set a million dollars aside, a million and a half, nine hundred thousand, I would set aside excess surplus that we had. After the increase in wages that we did, we won't be having that surplus to set aside, I haven't budgeted any surplus to set aside. We have the money we have sitting there and if we put some of this additional grant money set aside, then we'll have that, that's money we won't have to borrow. But of course, the jail is a big unknown, that's this thing that we're working through, Mike Blake is kind of spearheading that. As he's the commissioner over public safety and of course, Shalon and Ken are working on it and I've done a lot of work as well. But what's in the budget is one point one million for for land acquisition and I also put some other. Minor stuff in there so that we had some. Money to work with as we do public hearings, if we need to do any. Any marketing to communicate with the public what we're doing, we talked about hiring a PR firm. So I put fifty thousand dollars in other current expense. In case we need to do anything like that. I also, I also put two hundred thousand dollars into engineering and and legal. Because we have, we have contracted with the engineer and and we will be actively working with them and spending money as we work through design, so.
Dan, how much do we have saved right now for the jail, besides the one point one for land?
We were at eleven million.
Eleven plus what you've tucked away before, or does that include that?
No, that includes that, but. Oh, that's a really good question and, you know, I'll send, I'll send, I'll, I'll, I'll come up with that, because I need to transfer, we have money sitting in the regular capital projects fund. And then I created a special capital projects fund, since this is gonna be such a large project, a dedicated fund called Fund Forty. Six, I mean forty five, Fund Forty Four is our, our regular general capital projects fund. I created a fund called Forty Five, which is where we're putting all of the jail, where all the construction and all of that will happen.
And Nicole has.
I have to do one more big transfer, which is gonna be in next week's amendment to transfer the, the rest of the money from our capital projects to the jail capital projects. And at that point, I'll, I'll have you an exact number to the penny.
So we might be, I mean, if we get this five point six and we use ninety nine percent of towards the jail.
We don't know when that will come.
We might be pushing twenty.
Yeah.
Twenty?
Yeah, I hope so, that money will go, it'll come in in two years, I think twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four. But I'm not sure, we haven't seen a lot of information on it, just of course, and we need to get together and make sure that that was all signed. Anyways, we'll talk, we'll talk offline.
I never got an email on that, I was gonna tell you that.
Okay, we'll have to look at that. Normal capital expenditures, the Road Department and. And landfill, we have to keep it ahead of our yellow fleet. And this year, we, we bought, we're gonna buy Bruce a couple of trucks. We've got, we've got to start working through our dump truck fleet in the Road Department. All of them we have are all aging at the, about the same time. So our plan, we're gonna buy two this year, we'll probably buy another one each year until we've kind of worked through and get that fleet good. Most of his other equipment has been replaced in the last, over the last three or four years. Loaders and and.
Didn't he have a loader on his?
I think we do have a loader as well.
On his?
Yeah. And of course, with the landfill, there's, they're replacing some of their typical stuff. Luckily, not the big, the big boy. Big compactor is about a million bucks when we buy one of those, but we don't have anything like that in there. So just as an executive summary at the end, um, inflation, we're keeping an eye on it. It's, it's a major factor. Um, some of the amendments that we'll be doing next um, meeting, we'll be amending some budgets for fuel and other things, food. That have, that were not built into this year's budget. So um, assuming that that continues to stay high, um, is going to affect the county. Um, potential recession could significantly impact revenue. Most people are thinking that we're going to have a kind of a, a minor recession. Whether we're in one or not right now, doesn't really matter. We're, we are seeing negative GDP growth. Um, we just hope there isn't a big one. And so assuming things are fairly minor with the recession, the county should, um, should weather that storm pretty well. We are well managed. We're fiscally sound. I've been, always been really proud to work at Iron County. I've been proud of our way we approach governance. The way that we are fiscally um, conservative. And um, it's for the guy who has to go to sleep every night stressing about this stuff, I sleep pretty well. Um, and I have been able to do so the majority of the six years I've been the CFO. And um, I couldn't do that without good, good commissioners as a partner in that. We do have to spend money. Um, sometimes we step over dollars to pick up dimes. So there are times when you need to buy new and things like that, but a general conservative approach is the reason why. While these storms are circling around, we're not, we're not too stressed out. We were able to do a salaries and wage thing because we had the surplus. We have spent already that surplus on salaries and wages. So we really need to keep a close eye on the, on the, the ship's steering wheel. Um, we need to watch what's happening. But I am sleeping well at night. So we need to continue to move towards a solution on a new correctional facility and just keep our eye on the ball. That is my report. I don't know if there's any questions by the commissioners before you turn it over to the public hearing and I'm, I'll answer any questions the public has as well.
I think I've asked mine.
Thanks for sitting through my, usually Mike's asleep by now, but he's on a cruise ship, so I'm sure he scheduled this today just for that reason. He hates these things.
Okay, um, chair will call uh, to open the public hearing regarding the twenty twenty-three proposed final budget. Any? Any comments? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. And Dan can come back up.
And you won't vote on it till next week, our next meeting. That way, if anything comes up, anything can change. Um, we just, if anything does change between now and the adoption of it, I will. Spell it out in detail before you vote on it.
Okay, thank you, Dan. Okay, we will go to public comments. Three minute uh, time limit. Should not repeat others' comments, only for items not on the agenda. No items related to commission role on appeals board and comments directed to the commission, no attacks on others' character. Any public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on. So number three, uh. They postponed that, so can we just go on? Do we need to table it or?
You can just declare.
Move on. Okay, we'll just stricken that. And we will go on to number four. Presentation of the twenty twenty-two annual bee inspectors report by Blaine Nay. Thank you. Oh, no way. Wow.
Is that, is that worth over fifty dollars, Blaine? Is it worth over fifty dollars?
It might be over fifty.
It's about three dollars a pound.
Okay.
Yummy.
Thank you, Blaine.
Thank you.
I'm gonna have to make some scones.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, there you go.
Oh, look at that.
Let's see. Did somebody get two copies of the report? The, I've been the county bee inspector for several years now. Alma and Dale were on the commission at the time. I don't remember who else was. The Utah Bee Inspection Act was adopted four years before statehood. It's been around quite a while and it was adopted at the insistence of the beekeepers. Uh, we had, still have, but we're having a lot of problems back in the eighteen hundreds with a really nasty disease. As it progresses, it, it produces spores that are viable for forty to eighty years, different estimates. And so once, once a colony, a hive has been diseased, it's basically diseased forever. And uh, the beekeepers wanted to get a handle on that, on that, so they, they told the legislature, we need an inspection process. Because this other beekeeper over here is not taking care of his bees and it's killing mine. So that, that's, that's the origin of the act. It act, the act requires each county to appoint at least one, one inspector. And it requires all beekeepers to be registered. The registration so that I can find them and look at their bees, see if they have any problems. If I do find problems, it could be disease, parasites, or Africanization, then I help them through that problem. Get the, get the problem solved before it spreads to other beekeepers. Our livestock, I was talking to Commissioner Whit a little bit ago, I have more head of livestock than she does.
In your backyard?
About a half a million.
In his, in his backyard?
In my backyard. The, the honeybee is very differ from other livestock in that, that you have cattle out on the range. Which, but you're the only one out there, probably, the only rancher. The problem that we have with the bee is that we can't confine her, confine the bees to our backyard. They have to go out and forage for water.
You don't have fences.
Pollen.
You don't have fences between the.
Don't have fences. And when times are good, when there's plenty of resources available, they'll go as far as. A radius of four, uh, three, three to four miles. And so that, that covers all of Cedar City. If you're in the middle of Cedar City, your, your bees are all over town. If, if there's a colony of bees over there a mile away or five miles away. That is collapsing due to disease and parasites, my bees are going to find them and bring that problem back to my hives. And so that's why we have this inspection process. Find the problem before it gets out of hand and get it fixed. Uh, my, I like being the, the inspector for the county for selfish reasons. I want everybody else to have healthy bees. If they have healthy bees, mine, there's no threat to mine. So this year, uh, I, I focus on the newer beekeepers, the less experienced beekeepers, because that's, that's where the problems are. We have some that have, have been keeping bees for decades and I don't worry about them. One of them I did, we did find a problem with them three or four years ago. Helped him fix it. Uh, this year I inspected sixteen apiaries, some of them multiple times to help them through problems. A total of thirty-two colonies. A colony is, is the bees that live in the hive. The hive is the, the nest that they live in. The bees are the colony. And so I inspected thirty-two colonies and this is not counting my own. One of the things that I try to help the beekeepers through is managing swarms. I don't want my bees to go to leave. Uh, if they get crowded, half the bees will leave with the queen. That's a hundred fifty, hundred seventy dollars worth of bees. I don't want to lose that. More importantly, I don't want them to move into my neighbor's soffit. So I, I helped the beekeepers control swarming and it, and, and some of them uh, didn't do what I suggested and they had them swarm. And who knows where they went. So that, that's one problem that we had this year. And you'll see that on the, on the handout there. Sometimes when they swarm. They, they'll leave behind a bunch of queen cells to raise new queens. And uh, sometimes that's unsuccessful. And so you wind up with a queenless colony and they're doomed unless we can find another queen for them. So I found a few cases of that. Uh, one of the things we're looking for is parasites. There's a mite that's really devastating at vectors. About four dozen viruses. Had, had a couple of cases where the, the mite count was way too high. One on the top of the second page there, you see we found twenty-four mites out of three hundred bees. So that's, uh, we want to keep it at below two percent. Above that, you start having new economic impact on the colony. I had three or four of those with, with high mite counts. Uh, one colony uh, was extremely aggressive. When I, when I find that, I, I take a sample and send it up to Salt Lake. They do a DNA test looking for Africanization. Africanization is the big cause of, of aggressive bees, but uh, sometimes they're just mean. And uh, so we want to find those and help the beekeeper work through that. And one of the, one of the cases where it's extremely aggressive, well, we can requeen the queen and that changes the. The temperament of the colony over time. You have uh, adult bees in the hive, plus you have brood. And all of that, live, live bees and the brood have to die before your Africanization problem is gone. They're replaced by new, new bees with different genetics. It takes about three months.
In a case of Africanization, you don't necessarily have to destroy the hive. I thought you.
Yeah, you can, you can requeen it and that'll fix the problem. The problem with that is, like you said, it takes three months. And you, you want to live with mean bees for three months. Do your neighbors want to live with mean bees for three months? So sometimes the, the thing to do is just kill them. And there was one colony here in the county that, that's what we did. Uh, so she'll start over next year. And that, that's one of the risks of letting the bees swarm. If, if you're raising new queens, they're going to go out and mate. Ideally with a couple of dozen drones. And if a couple of those drones are Africanized, you're going to have mean bees. So we don't want to let them swarm. And so I try and help the beekeepers through that. The second page there is something new that the state has asked us to do is to report. On the outreach that we do, we do to the beekeeping community. So you can see that I, I did a couple of presentations for North Elementary. I'm glad to go, I've done it several times before, but I'm glad to go to the schools and uh, talk to them about bees, about biology. Give them a little science lesson. We had, uh, every year the, the extension agent has a farm field day. I participate in that. I have a. An exhibit on bees and all the fourth graders in the county get to, get to see bees and learn about them. Every year I try and do a class for Cal Ranch. Just a free class. Invite all the beekeepers in the county to come and listen to. My scare stories. Scare them into being good beekeepers or, or scare them out of the craft. Either one. I want to be good or gone. So put in a few hours there helping out the beekeeping community. Any questions?
Yes, do we, uh, do we pay you enough to at least cover your costs, Blaine?
That was uh. Something that Dale insisted on, that he'd pay me mileage.
Okay.
I uh, I confess I don't keep track of mileage, so I can't submit a report. Somebody calls me, says I need help and I just jump the truck and go. So I need to do a better job of that so that I can.
Well, we need to figure something out. You shouldn't, we, we really appreciate what you do and, and we ought to at least compensate your, your costs, your fuel.
Yeah, I, you know, it's a volunteer position. I don't need to be paid for this. And I, you know, I'm retired. I've got adequate income, so I don't need that.
Could you guesstimate your mileage in a year and, and let us at least pay you a line item amount that, of that, as long as you're doing, doing this job?
It, it was uh, at least a million miles.
Sounds reasonable.
I, I don't know.
I'd be happy if you want to try and.
Figure something out.
Extrapolate your miles out.
Some counties uh, just pay the inspector a flat rate.
And maybe that would be the better way to do it.
It's, it's easy to calculate. Uh, I, this year I started doing, uh, Washington County two. Uh, the state asked me to take over that county and, and it got it approved. Appointed by the county commission down there and they're paying eleven hundred dollars a year.
Well, you're going to get rich on that.
What's that?
You're going to get rich on that.
Rich on that.
Well, it's uh. It's not as much as a million miles, but.
Dan's left, looks like, but I think we ought to at least, Luke, maybe talk to Dan about, let's, let's try to slip, maybe at least match what Washington County.
Yes, absolutely.
That's probably not even going to cover his gas for the year.
To not give him administrative overburden for miles, just do a flat. I like that.
A flat amount would be good. I think we should do that too.
Mention to Dan, he's left just to, we ought to, I mean, do we, I, that's something I think we need to. Is that something we need to?
It's not an agenda item, but you could, we could certainly, um.
Put it on for next time.
Or to include it, because the next time will be your, your budget. Um, and, and to mention that as part of the budget discussion.
You can mention that.
Because, you know, you have the ability to go ahead and ask him to do that and then vote on it next meeting.
Yeah.
With the larger budget.
Yeah, if Luke will take that up with Dan, that'd be great.
Another question?
We want to do that. Nope, we do appreciate, uh, I do have one correction on your paper. So Terry Peterson is S E N. That's my brother. By the way, but it's not S O N.
I'll make the correction.
Okay.
There's a spelling error there too, uh, at least one, so.
We appreciate it, Blaine. Thank you.
Thank you, Blaine. Okay, we will go over to five and. Discussion of possible approval or a partial subdivision vacate and. Man for lots four and five, Iron Springs Road, Industrial Park One subdivision to combined into a single lot. Renumbered for A. Reed.
Good morning, commissioners. These two next items are fairly straightforward and simple. They're both similar in that they are just subdivisions that have lots. That want to eliminate a lot line between two lots and combine them into a single lot so they can build over the lot line. It's really straightforward. It's simple. This one is out off an industrial springs. Uh, subdivision off of the Iron Springs Road. And it's just in the light industrial zone. And it's the original subdivision. You can see here, this lot. Uh, outlined in red would be the combination of the two lots to be the amended lot one A. This process, of course, is just a commission approval. It does not require public hearing if all of the owners of the property sign the plat, which they have done. And we have the milars here to sign and approve today to be recorded. And so this property is, uh, you know, a good plat, it's prepared, it's been reviewed and checked and signed by the engineer and. And is ready for approval and I'm not aware of it. We, of course, do send letters to adjacent property owners on this. I haven't heard from anybody. I don't know that there's anyone here today to speak to that, but if there are, there, you know, you may ask, but otherwise, I think we're good to go.
Okay. Um, Chair would ask for a motion.
I'll move to approve the partial subdivision vacate and amend for lots four and five, Iron Springs Road Industrial Park One subdivision. And this is to combine into a single lot renumbered for A, located in the description as listed in the agenda. And the applicant is Merlin Barlow.
Okay, second, uh, moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, we'll go to six, discussion of possible approval of a partial subdivision vacate and amended, uh, for lot one and two, um, block BN, uh, Cedar Valley Acres subdivision to combined into a single lot renumbered one A.
Again, similar situation, located in Cedar Valley Acres, out off of 6400 North. It's just two lots that are adjacent to each other. They want to build in the center of those two lots. And so we're just vacating the lots and renumbering to lot one A and block BN. It, uh, meets the criteria. It's still a minimum lot size. It's really, I mean, these are good things really because especially in areas where there are a lot of smaller lots and they really have a hard time meeting setbacks for a well and septic and everything combining these lots where there's not services available makes a lot of sense. So again, the property owners were notified. We're not, haven't heard from any, any of them. I'm not aware of any problems or concerns in this, so ready for action.
Okay. Motion.
Move to approve the partial subdivision vacate and amend for lots one and two, block BN, Cedar Valley Acres subdivision to combine into a single lot renumbered one A and located in the description of that, in the agenda. Applicants Casey and Shayla Zufeld.
Okay, I'll second that. Um, moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carry. Do you want us to sign those?
Yes, please. And, and while, while I have your attention, if I can just take a second, I have a letter that I'd like you to sign that, uh, Mike Wurthen prepared for our support of the, doesn't take a commission action, but I just thought I'd mention it, is support of the, uh, Utah Prairie Dog Habitat Conservation Plan. Uh, Kevin Bunle is here from DWR, explained that process. And now we have the letter. Uh, would like for you to sign that, uh, for each of the commissioners. Uh, and we'll get Blake when he comes back. How long is he gonna be gone? Do you know?
Few more days. He's just on a cruise.
Okay. But it'll at least be before the meeting in Richfield. The, the, um, RAC meeting will be the first presentation. I'd like to have the letter where we can read it at that meeting and present it to the, the RAC and then they'll make a recommendation. Uh, for your reminder, this is our first step that will be given to the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service for, uh, steps to, um, de-list Utah Prairie Dog. It's been a long time coming and it's been a, a good process and it was done through, uh, a lot of different efforts, but primarily a driver was DWR, uh, hiring BYU to do a population viability analysis to try to evaluate over the last 40 years what the history has been and, and the numbers and tracking them and what the right kind of colony size and distribution and all of those things are. And so I, they've got a lot of good science behind it now and they have the data to support a delisting proposal. One of the critical components of a delisting is to have a management plan in place to show how the dogs will be managed going forward if they're delisted. And that's what this conservation strategy does. And, um, you've seen a copy of it. It's available, uh, for the public to review. And so it's going to be presented and anybody wants any more information about them, let me know. Otherwise I have the letter.
State will take over after they delist, right?
The idea would be that DWR, the state would take over, uh, with local input from a biologist and DWR, uh, U.S. Fish and Wildlife would still be involved, BLM would be involved. There's the same group of people that would be managing them and have management responsibility under the Endangered Species Act, would simply have input and, and, you know, they'll still have target numbers. They'll still have management strategies, but we won't have the take requirements that we've had before under the Endangered Species Act. So it'll make it a lot easier for people to go forward in development. And then we'll still be monitoring and counting and translocating and still actively managing the species so that they can be sustained over time. We don't have to relist them again.
Good work.
Can you remind Brad to change his signature? Or I can.
I noticed Blaine on your jar of honey, it says not for sale. So you don't even make money on your honey. You're losing proposition.
Yes, I agree with that. The, uh, I, to sell it, I have to have correct labels and inspection of my kitchen and stuff like that. And, and this, I, I run a four H beekeeping club too. And this was harvested by my kids.
Oh, nice.
Free child labor.
Good job. That's awesome.
That's nice. Good job. Yeah. Okay. And we will move on to Jennifer for personnel.
Hello. I'm super quick today. Um, Ashley Ross was selected from the most recent competitive recruiting and selection process to backfill the full-time deputy one position, um, in the sheriff's office corrections, um, effective tw- uh, December 11th, 2022. And Anna Teeples, um, has elected to transfer from the full-time, um, sheriff's office corrections deputy one. Um, she was in the culinary to the full-time sheriff's office deputy patrol one, um, into the drug court tracker position effective December 11th, 2022.
Very good. Can we have a motion on?
I'll move to approve in, uh, Jen, item seven under personnel items A and B as described by Jennifer Bradbury, our HR director.
I'll second that. Uh, moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay, very good.
Okay. Thank you.
Hey, Dan.
So she's going to be a deputy two. I should have said deputy two, not deputy one. So that's me. Sorry.
Thanks, Jennifer.
So I asked Luke to remind you, but we decided since Blaine doesn't keep track of his mileage with his beekeep, bee inspections, that we would like to match what Washington County does. There, I think they've agreed to pay him $1,100. Is that correct, Blaine? A line item because, and, and we know that doesn't even probably cover his fuel or time. So, I mean, it might help with fuel, but he doesn't, um, submit mileage reports. So could we add that to the budget for the approval next week?
Yeah. Um, there's a, there's a few other things. I, I just got an email from, um, Dave Mitchell in the sheriff's office. There's a couple of things we need to tweak for that as well. So we could, I'm just, I'm just trying to think.
How does that work? Do, can we, can we make a change between now and then or, or does it have to be?
We have to have another public hearing?
You don't have to have another public hearing. Um, you, you could choose to if you wanted to. You could open it up for public comment. Um,
We'll have public comment next time anyway, right?
Yeah.
Before we vote on it.
So, um, yeah, I mean, this, today was your official public hearing. Um,
Well, you know that this was a change, right? I mean, it's not.
Yeah. So the, the other thing we could do is we can, um, we can just plan on it and build it into an amendment in, in the next year. Um, which is, I mean, you saw how much public comment we got today. We don't usually get a lot of public comment. You do want to give people the chance to, to talk, especially before you increase the size of the budget. That's, that's the, the law. So we could, I mean, we could plan on it and build it in as amendment. We're not talking about a large, you know, thing. I'm just more thinking about the functionality of where we would put it. Um, and we don't want to start a new department. So we could probably put it in like a non-departmental, the non-departmental department within general fund. Um, in fact, we even do have some wiggle room in that, in that line item. Um,
I mean, Blaine's shirt on the back, it says farmers on this side, crazy people here and bee, bees right here in the middle.
Bees right in the middle. I saw that.
Oh, wow. That fits into your budget.
I thought farmers and crazy people completely, the Venn diagram completely overlapped. I say that as a farmer.
They should be or you wouldn't be in that business.
That's right.
So I did actually have one question on that. Did, did you have the intention of making that effective in 2022 as well? Where you'd want to have been amended, or do you want it to start in 2023? Cause that does change what Dan has to do.
I would say let's do it this year if we can.
So we do have a, um, other current expense line item within non-departmental. If you want to have any line that you would consider a miscellaneous slush fund type line, it is within there and it is within that, the scope of that budget. We wouldn't even have to amend the budget. In fact, we wouldn't have to amend next year's budget. We could put it out of there and then write it down as a line item when we create the following budget. Um, for the size of this, that's probably what actually what I would suggest.
Okay.
So, something to think about.
If we can do it this year and next, that'd be good, I think.
In order to do that, if, could you submit something to my office, an invoice or something like that? We need something to pay from so that we can attach to the check so we know why we're paying it. Just Iron County Beekeeper.
Inspector.
Inspector. Um, something like that.
An invoice type thing.
Just either mail it to the county auditor's office or drop it off up here and we can get it put in. We'll have one of the commissioners sign it since it's not within a specific department. So.
Gotta work.
Okay. Very good. Um, I think we can adjourn. We're done with all of it. Thanks, everybody for being here.